Good evening. We are at the City Council, City Hall Council Chambers, 10 West State Street. It's 5:30 PM on September 26, 2022 here for calling to the order of our City Council meeting, and I have to read this advisory comment to you. The Mayor and Council welcome comments from the public during the discussion of any items on the agenda. You are required to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Limit your time to present your remarks to three minutes so that others may be given an opportunity to speak. Speak clearly and direct your comments to the Mayor and City Council as a whole, not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Would those who are able, please join us in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Very good. I declare quorum. It's now time for any comments by the Mayor or Council or City Administrator, anybody on the Council. City Administrator?
Yes, I would just like to remind everybody that some postcards went out to some randomly selected households this weekend, asking you to take part in the 2022 community survey. And so you do need to go to a link for that. If you do not have a computer or internet access, you will be sent a paper copy via mail. So we ask that you do participate if you receive, if you were one of the lucky few to receive that.
Thank you. And then I would just like to mention that it was another weekend where people came out and enjoyed Marshalltown. The Oktoberfest had a bunch of good things going on. The people that put those programs together have to bite their nails, hoping that the weather is going to be good. They lucked out this year, but even if it hadn't been good, they had so many things that were fun for people to do that it was just great to see. It reminded me of the 13th Street Celebration not too long ago. There's another 13th Street Celebration this Sunday, celebrating our diversity. And I think on Thursday night is another parade. I guess the last one was really good. There'll be a parade for our high school homecoming on Thursday night. You might even see a mayor in a convertible if they can find one, I guess. I may be able to do that. But that stuff is kind of fun, and it's just an example of things going on in Marshalltown that are happening now that we're getting back to some sort of normalcy after the coronavirus. The next part is a fun one, and that's to recognize people for years of service. And so, should we start with the, with the police chief first?
I don't believe we have anybody from the Police Department here tonight, but we do have Jenny Hart with Parks and Recreation, who is celebrating 15 years. And I get the honor of being the one to read some comments submitted by Jeff Hubbard, Parks and Rec Director, who couldn't be here tonight. As our recreation supervisor, Jenny is our herder of cats, organizer of chaos, and a great juggler, though we won't actually ask you to demonstrate your juggling skills right now. Each summer, she manages the Aquatic Center while putting on a summer camp for 125 kids and many other special events. That chaos doesn't end when school starts. Her fall, winter, and spring are just as busy. Jenny is a great planner and organizer, but understands when things don't go as planned. Sometimes you have to go with the flow and then make changes next year. She is a true asset to our organization, and in stealing from Chief Tupper, Jenny is a rock star. So Jenny, we have a certificate for you, and you can say anything if you'd like to.
You know, Jenny, Jason Brown would not have let you off that easy. He was kind of your biggest fan when he was here putting the concert on, when Al Hoop and the others had that concert outside here for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum. And, and they really did highlight what you, what you do, and that was part of what got me to know what you do. And if you folks haven't seen the tornado vignette about what Jenny's crew did with all the kids they had downstairs when the tornado hit, it's just gripping. I challenge you to read that and not tear up a little bit. Truly so. Thank you for your years of service. Anyone else to recognize or should we just mention by name?
Chief.
Okay. Well, 20 years for Brian Secret with the Police Department, 10 years with the Finance Department by Deb Tricky and Chanel Clavinga at the Library for 15 years. It's time now to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda. One of the councilors has indicated to me that we need to pull number three from that agenda. So with that one pulled, is there anybody moving to approve?
Still moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Very good. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. Time to read those.
Prove the minutes for the September 12 meeting and the bill is the amount of $1,919,610.58. Approved liquor license renewals for Elmwood Country Club at 1734 Country Club Lane, Applebee's at 3101 South Center Street, Wayward Social at 1101 South Sixth Street, Old Timer at 401 South Center Street, Quick Star Number 394 at 2500 South Center Street, Aldi at 2405 South Center Street, Casey's Number 3228 and 916 East Main Street, Fiddle and Whistle at 20 West Main Street. Resolution accepting Bennett authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Dodge 1500 SSV Crew Cab for the price of $38,987 from Stew Hansen Dodge City for the use in the Water Pollution Control Department. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the Box Culvert Repair Project Number SMW 20003, an increase of $1,275. Resolution approving contract change order number 12 for the Airport Hangar Project Number ARP 19001, a decrease of $36,450. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the Edred Extension Project Number STR 19003, a decrease of $10,653. Resolution approving a temporary easement agreement with U.S. Bank for the State Street Reconstruction Project Number STR 21004. Resolution approving an agreement for professional services with Fox Strand for the Headworks and Digestor Improvements Project Number WPC 21001 in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution to approve a 12-month extension for the time to complete a city code building grant and facade incentive work for 34 West Main Street. Resolution to approve a 12-month extension of time to complete the city code building upgrade and facade incentive grant work for 36 West Main Street. Resolution declaring certain property surplus property and authorizing disposal thereof of a 1998 salt brine mixing system from the Street Department. Resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve the development agreement with Carl of Marshalltown LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments. Resolution ordering construction for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum Generator Project, setting public hearing on proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost and directing publication of notice to bidders.
Thank you. By my count, that saved us about 45 minutes. Let's go on to number three. Is there a motion to approve it, to get it on the discussion table?
A motion.
Thank you. Very good. Discussion?
Yeah, I was the one who requested this to be pulled. I just wanted to have a discussion, you know? The Transportation Committee, where did it go? What's the history on that? It seems like something that may be fairly relevant to all the traffic issues we're talking about recently. And so I was just wanting a little history on that. And then, you know, what can citizens do if they think their street needs a little extra protection?
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. I'm going to go ahead and open that policy up just for discussion purposes and so those people can see it who are interested. So this is on the agenda because I was on our website, and I came across this policy. This policy is for how to handle basically citizens' requests when they have concerns about this high speed of traffic in their neighborhoods. This policy was enacted in September 8 of 2003, and part of it does go through a transportation committee of City Council members in order to get this thing moving. My issue with that, and the reason I brought it up, was we don't have a transportation committee from City Council right now. Looking back through records, they were able to determine that in November of 2003 is when that committee was temporarily suspended. Since that time, it's also been removed from the Council manual. So that was definitely a part of the policy that either needed to be amended to something else or removed altogether. As I reviewed the policy in its whole, the criteria in which they wanted to look at complaints and things is very good. All of those items listed is definitely signifying that there is an issue with speeding in that neighborhood. Some of the concerns I had with the policy is, is what to do about them if they do meet those criteria, and then also the time commitment it takes to prove that it meets that criteria. Two of the criteria, the average annual daily traffic, that does require us to go out, put traffic count type items up there. In addition to the speeding, if 15% of the vehicles need to be going more than 5 mile an hour over the speed limit. So those are both very data-driven decisions and criteria, and we currently don't have the staff or the equipment to be able to address every single complaint that way. We do want to address residents and their concerns, and we've done so, but more on a case-by-case basis. Recently, we've had some, some concerns on many streets. Typically, how I handle that is I pass that along to the Police Department, just so they know there's a concern of speeding. I also ask a lot of questions of that resident. I want to know, is the concern the speed alone? Is there another safety concern? Is somebody at a stop sign unable to see traffic as they're coming out, looking at stopping sight distances and those items? And I'll frequently make a site visit just to make sure there aren't concerns. But if the issue is truly a speeding issue, I do try to pass those on to the Police Department. They get more concerns and complaints in regards to speeding than I do, so they're able to have a better handle on those issues. In cases where they're getting a lot of complaints in the same area, we do look at implementing the use of the speed trailer to understand a little bit more. We recently have that set up on South Third Ave. We've completed half the roadway. In other words, northbound traffic, I think we're complete, and southbound, we're still gathering that data. But that's two-to-three-week process, and we can't necessarily do that with, with every item. And additionally, I was concerned with the use of speed humps that this policy outlines as being an acceptable use to calm traffic. For public streets, we do not recommend speed humps. We do have a speed hump being proposed. I'll be going in on Bobcat Boulevard here this next year. But as far as publicly owned streets for maintenance standpoints, no removal, sweeping and stuff, we don't recommend speed humps. So those are the reasons that I am recommending repealing it. We do take the concerns very seriously, and we'll continue to do so, but we're asking for a case-by-case in coordination with the Police Department to understand how to address these concerns.
Your Honor, if I may? You may.
I think the Transportation... I'm feeling really old. The Transportation Committee, the City Council, used to be divided up into several different committees. There was the Environmental Commission, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Transportation, and the Policy. And if you sat on City Council at that time, you were picked by the Mayor to sit on two, if not three, of these different committees. Everything that came to City Council came through a committee and was passed through a committee before it came to City Council. And I think about in 2003 or 2004, they changed the policy and did away with the committees that the City Council worked on and just went to a committee of the whole. So basically, the transportation was a function of our government makeup at that time, and they changed it after I left. So I like this better, actually.
Other discussion up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Heather, you said we are putting a speed hump on Bobcat Boulevard?
The city is not putting a speed hump on Bobcat Boulevard. The owners of that road are putting a speed hump.
Do we plow that?
We do. It's going to be a removable speed hump, and it will be removed prior to city performing any snow removal maintenance.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion up here? Otherwise, we'll call for public comment. And seeing nobody rising or leaning toward the microphone, let's call the count.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. We go down to Austin, Texas, quite where they do have a lot of speed bumps in the residential areas, and I will tell you, it is, it will catch a jogger and a walker off guard if they're going along the street. And I hope that the students don't do what sometimes happens down there, which is use them as an ability to test how much loft you can get. Anyway, let's go on to the next item, which is ordinances. Would you read the first one for us, please?
We have reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the report section.
We have the Impact Quarterly Report.
Scroll down to there. I'm good. I just haven't scrolled it. Thanks.
Good evening. David Hicks, YSS of Marshall County, wanted to provide a report on impact to Marshalltown Police and Community Team, where YSS has embedded social workers or community advocates within the Police Department. So through eight months here, Impact has responded to 157 total calls involving 348 people. We've also provided 272 follow-up visits to 473 people. Purpose of those follow-up visits is really to deter the frequent calls that the Police Department receives and to provide those services at the right time and the right place. So some of those initial goals we wanted to measure were keeping police back out onto the street to deal with the criminal element and safety issues in the community. So of those 157 calls, 138 or, or 88% of the police officers were able to return to the field after that initial call. And the other thing we wanted to work on was providing right services at the right time to people. So of those 157 calls, 147 or 93% of the callers were expect, were accepting of Impact's involvement. So not only are we saving police officer time, but the families that we're working with want us there, at least 93% do. We recently completed our annual survey with the Police Department to kind of assess how we're doing, and we asked the same questions year after year. I've pulled a few of these. Has Impact's involvement reduced your time spent in dealing with noncriminal situations? 89% of the officers said yes. Has Impact's involvement likely prevented an escalating situation from becoming worse on your shift? 78% said yes. Has Impact's involvement increased your resources to provide assistance to the public? 94% of the officers said yes. And has Impact's role and engagement been a benefit to you in your capacity at the Marshalltown Police Department? 94% of the officers said yes. So we're certainly meeting the police officer's needs, and that was certainly our intent. We do want police officer involvement, so we do allow written comments, more coverage, expanded hours, and additional staff. That was comment after comment after comment. So they want support in the morning, they want support 3:00 AM, and right now, we're working about 2 till midnight. So we do the best we can, but there's certainly hours of the day where there's issues and we can't respond, so we do some follow-ups with that. One officer noted, "We have noticed since Impact has started working with us, we have far less multiple interactions with a wide variety of individuals we would normally be dealing with on a consistent basis." So I think we're really working with those families who may be calling the police quite a bit, and we're providing those interventions and supports to surprise, provide services at the right time and right place, which, you know, certainly that's the intent. Mark Doland is our newest community advocate. He started in July. Darcie Anderson moved to Illinois with her husband's move. Mark's been great. He's come from Foundation Two in Des Moines to operate a very similar program with the Police Department there. He's had 25 years in corrections, substance abuse counseling, crisis outreach, so he's certainly the right person at the right seat. So be happy to answer any questions you may have for Impact.
Questions up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Hey, David. One thing that we've never asked before, or if we did, I apologize, I don't remember, but all your calls, you're going to households, correct?
Could be households, could be any, any point where there may be a police officer called to. For example, we've been called to gas stations where a vehicle's been sitting there, and there's been a homeless family needing to find services and support. So a call comes in from whatever location, business, residence, public place, police respond first, assess it, then they call Impact to respond. We assess it right there. Officer can usually go back out into the field, and then we handle the call.
So I've got to believe, if it's a business calling, and I'm thinking of one in my neighborhood, that there's probably a higher percentage of that person repeating the incident at a business versus a family incident. Is that true?
Potentially. It seems like every, every call is different. I think we have certainly some repeat callers, like homelessness just doesn't resolve itself in 24, 48 hours. That requires, you know, some long-term supports, and I think we can maybe start working on that a little bit. But there are some families that they're just high need, and we have officers, you know, in the past responding to a family conflict and spending three hours trying to reduce, you know, the issue in the home where we can go in and do that.
In the future, since we're funding this, is it possible for you and Mike to possibly track the same individual, repeated calls at a business? Or, or that's, can you track it by individual to see if this person is causing, is it a me, I'm trying to get at, is, do we have a mental health issue we need to resolve, but it's hard to resolve if it's a business involved?
Could be. The issue we have in, in, in doing this a couple of years now, our data collection tool. We really need a, a better data collection tool, because right now, we're just using a spreadsheet with all of our metrics in there. We want to have a data collection tool. If we put in somebody's name, we can query that name and determine how many times have we been called for that person or a business. So we're not there yet, but we need a more robust data collection tool that could, that could do those kind of things.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Your Honor.
Anyone else up here? Thank you. I guess I'm curious. Are you getting as many calls as Chief Tupper is about our program from other people, other police departments around the state because of this success here?
I think they start with Chief Tupper, because they probably want to hear it from the horse's mouth. Does it work? And really, you have to have law enforcement buy-in, City Council buy-in. I think once you have leadership at that level who like to say good, positive things and have good outcomes, then it rolls down to the agencies who might be able to help. And we're diverse enough in our, our abilities and our programs that we can handle multiple concerns that may be going on, but it really starts at your level, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, and I'd like to meet Mark Doland sometime. I hear good things about him.
Yeah, he's excellent.
Great. Thank you. Okay. That concludes our Item F reports. Now on to Item G resolutions before we do ordinances. What's our first resolution to address?
Resolution committing funding to the city of Marshalltown, Destination Iowa Creative Place Making Projects.
Floor is open for motion.
I'd make the motion, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'll just provide just a quick overview. This is a resolution committing funding for the Destination Iowa application, which is due this Friday, September 30. The city basically has to have 60% of project funding committed in order to be able to apply. So this accomplishes that for, or has to have 50%. We've gone above and beyond on some of these, but this basically accomplishes the funding commitment needed for the Water Plaza, for the Lynn Creek Trail Bridge, and for the Iowa Rivers Edge Trail Bridge as well.
Floor is open for discussion about it.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I just want to go on the record and say I cannot support this, because in the work session, several things were brought to our attention that we're not doing preventative maintenance, we don't, we're not budgeting properly for that. This has no numbers in it for long-term maintenance of these projects. And I think until we solve our budget issue of fixing the ongoing maintenance problems that we have that are the dilapidated buildings, so to speak, I don't think we should take on any more projects like this. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Other council comment or questions? Time for public comment.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So from a procedural standpoint, the memo that's attached to this says that we're committing funds that we're going to borrow. We can't borrow them until we have public hearings to borrow them. So you're basically telling everybody, don't show up to the public hearing. We don't care what you have to say. We're already committing to borrow this money right here. And there's a discussion at the end of today that's all about borrowing this money. So we're basically, again, why are we having the discussion at the end of the day and wasting the Council's time when you're committing to it right here at the beginning of the meeting? Same goes for the next item.
Other public comment? Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Very good. That resolution carried on to the next resolution.
Resolution authorizing the city of Marshalltown to submit a Destination Iowa Creative Place Making application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Lynn Creek District.
Move for approval? Second.
Discussion?
One of the requirements to submit an application is a specific resolution authorizing the application, and so this is on the agenda to take care of that requirement for the grant submission.
Council comments or questions? Public comment or questions? Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
That carried as well, and our last and third resolution? Oh, that one was a public hearing, actually, but what's this one about?
Public hearing and resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract, and costs for the South 7th Avenue Extension Project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number ECO 22001.
I'll declare the public hearing is open at 5:56 PM. Did the clerk get any written comments to your office?
No, Your Honor.
Time then for public comments. And then time for staff review. Heather?
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. This project is for a South 7th Ave extension, which is approximately 660 feet south of Olive Street. This stems from a development agreement approved by City Council in July of '21. At that time, the cost of this project was estimated a city share of 820,000. Based on current construction costs, the estimate for the city share is about 880,000. We've outlined in our memo some adjustments from the approved development agreement in funding that project. Essentially, a lot of that difference is coming from road use tax. This project is for a full residential street, curb urban section, 31 feet wide, with the appropriate utilities as well. We're planning on going out to bid with a substantial completion date of May 31st in 2023, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Time for council comments or questions.
Your Honor, if I may?
You, actually, I'm out of order. Well, it is on staff, no, it is, yes. You may. We're at council comments now.
Heather, is this exactly the length and everything we agreed to when we first passed this for this JBS project?
I believe the development agreement, the language in there was approximately 700 feet. I think we're stopping roughly 20 feet short of the property line just for grading purposes, but essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure and let the public know. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other council comment or questions? If not, I will declare the public hearing is closed at 5:58 PM and solicit a motion to approve that resolution.
I'd make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff? Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. On to Item H ordinances. What's our first one to address?
Ordinance 15047 to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 70.006, moving regulations for bicycles to Chapter 73 recreational vehicles. First reading.
Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, this was the item that was postponed from our August 8th meeting to see what was going to happen related to the golf cart and the ATV, UTV discussion. And so this has been pared down from what was originally proposed related to having some golf cart language in there to just addressing bicycle language and condensing that into Chapter 73 rather than keeping it out there in Chapter 70.006.
Thank you. Council comments and questions? Public comment and questions? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. That resolution carried.
Your Honor, I'd make, since this is just a housekeeping issue, I'd make a motion to, what's the word I'm looking for?
Waive the further readings?
Yeah, we've waived second and third. This is strictly a housekeeping change. I don't see any issue with taking four more weeks to do the second and third reading. So I'd move that we waive those readings.
I think your motion is in order. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
I don't think that is debatable. Let's just call the roll.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
You just saved the council quite a few minutes. Thank you. And had a good reading of that issue.
Your Honor, I'll take those minutes back. Don't, don't, don't wonder about that.
We have no doubt. All right, next resolution.
Ordinance 15048, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number 7 pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Second reading.
Anybody want to move to approve?
I'd move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this one.
Just as a reminder, this is the second reading of the ordinance that establishes the legal area for urban renewal area number seven and the ability to levy for incremental taxes in that area. We are requesting that we waive the second, or the third reading, third and final reading on that as well.
Other, well, discussion by council? Public reaction? Let's bow down to the resolution first.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Are there any other housekeepers out there that want to make a housekeeping motion?
I'd make the motion to waive further readings.
Is there a second?
I'd second that, Your Honor.
Roll call on this one.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. And our last resolution is a public hearing again. What's this one about? Oh, I'm looking, I'm looking at the wrong screen.
Ordinance 15049, to amend the code of ordinance, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 76, traffic schedules, schedule number four, stop intersections. Second reading.
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, I just want to clarify. So the second reading, we're adding the two other, I guess it's just, yeah, one intersection, writing one intersection, correct?
Correct. Heather Thomas, Public Works. This is for the second reading of the 24 stop signs we discussed at the first reading last council meeting. As Counselor Thompson has mentioned, in front of you, I added a memo. I received a letter this morning requesting the addition of two additional stop signs at the intersection of Noelway Drive and West Southridge Road. Because we're in this process, I would like to make that recommendation to go ahead and add that into this. It is also currently an uncontrolled four-way stop intersection, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council questions? Or comments? Public comment? Roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Safer way to do this, in case I'm looking at the wrong screen, is what's our next, that carried, what's our next item?
Ordinance 15050, to amend the code of ordinance, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 77, parking schedules, schedule 10, public access parking. Second reading.
Floor is open for motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Heather?
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. This is for the correction of ordinances related to two items in town. One is a three-hour parking sign that had been installed but not part of our ordinance as far as Second Street between Main and State Street, and the other is three-hour parking in the 13th District. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And this, again, this is our second reading of this one. Any questions up here? Questions or comments out there? Roll call on this one.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried as well.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could we, can I make a motion to waive the third reading since it's been unanimous twice?
Yep. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Carried as well. Very good, thank you. We're saving lots of time tonight for future meetings. Next item, one mayball.
Ordinance 15051, to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 73, recreational vehicles, to prohibit the use of all-terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles. Second reading.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion.
Just as a reminder, this ordinance does fulfill that prohibition of ATVs and UTVs with very special exceptions broken out related to city functions and special events.
Discussion up here. Discussion down there. Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anybody want to save some time at a future meeting?
I think there might be people that show up for the third reading, Your Honor, so I would caution against that.
Very good. On to the next and last ordinance to talk about.
Ordinance 15052, to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 73, recreational vehicles, to prohibit the use of golf, golf cars. First reading.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's going to take a while to get used to golf cars instead of golf carts, isn't it? Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. Just as a reminder, this is carrying out the, the past discussion to prohibit the use of golf cars, but carving out special exceptions related to city uses and special events.
Discussion up here.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to encourage the city council to not pass this to keep golf cars legal. They currently are. They're not causing any trouble. I think this disproportionately impacts public golf in Marshalltown, so I'd like to keep golf carts legal.
Thank you. Other discussion up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, one of those special uses is the shuttling of golf carts from one golf course to the other, right?
So the language that we have used does not spell out specific special events. What that will require is for them to fill out a special event application on our website, just as anybody else would, which would provide the information to share with the police department and other concerned departments related to when those activities would happen. And there is no fee for filling out that application.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments by the council before we open to the public? It is open to the public. Let's call the roll on this one.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Loos vote, that one passed if my account was right. And my sense is it's probably not going to result in a motion to waive the next reading. Let's go on to discussion items, and the first one of which is Anson Park George Property.
Councilmember Hoop asks that this be placed on the agenda.
This goes way back, three or four years ago. The discussion at the time was, we didn't want to lose use of the South Ball Diamond. But this, this is not a South Ball Diamond issue to me. There's land on the south side of the tree line, the fence line, that, between the George House and the park, that they have cared for for 55 years. And we had this discussion way back. And it kind of came down to what we charge them for that land. And what we did at the time was, was what to me was charging excessively for that land because we have historically sold lots or alleys or streets for $1. And we got to this, this one, and all of a sudden, we were going to charge them a lot more money. And that was wrong at the time, and I still think it's wrong. And I think I'd like to see this reconsidered and talked about and, and brought up again. And see if we can't do the right thing here.
Thank you. Other discussion up here?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm not, because I'm not familiar with that parcel or that section, how big of a lot are we talking about, Al? Is this a ditch that's being mowed privately, or is this like a, is this a?
20 feet, maybe?
So I'll, if I may, Your Honor?
You may.
If you're familiar with the Ball Diamond at Anson Park, Park and Rec years ago put up a fence just south of the, the first baseline, the Ball Diamond. Problem was, the city owned property behind that, that the George family has maintained for, Al says, 55 years. They have more right to ownership to this property than we do. I mean, they've been mowing it for the city. It's just the fence was put up not on the property line, it was put up inset on the city property. So I agree with Councilmember Ho that this is a no-brainer. They've been maintaining the property, they've been mowing it. It looks like their yard based on where the fence, and I think anybody drives down the street would think this is their yard. I mean, so this is like the mark of the property where legal advised us, they actually had more ownership of it down on North 5th Avenue than we did because they maintained it, and we actually bought.
And just, for the, for the record, I'm not advising that. This particular piece of property's been the subject of pretty intense litigation several years ago.
I'm sorry, Steve. Steve, was I, was I done talking?
I could tell that both of you are trying to talk at the same time, and that's one of the issues of trying to do this remotely too when we're streaming. So, yeah, Steve, I could tell you were trying to ensure yourself at a time when it may have been logical. Let me have the counselor finish with his comments, and then I'll let you know when we need to hear from you.
Your Honor, might I point out that it is at times advantageous for me to cut into conversation in order to avoid potential liabilities and to steer conversation. So I don't want to establish a precedent here where I have to sit around on my hands and wait while statements are being made before I'm permitted to speak.
Sure. And I will confess the difficulty in hearing when you did start to try to speak. I wish there was some way to, I, we can, I can see you on the screen, so I wish there was some way to have you indicate that, and I'll keep a closer watch on the screen for you. And I did hear you say that it has been involved in litigation. Is there any litigation still pending on this matter?
Uh, no, that ended up dropped with no resolution.
Okay, thanks. And I do believe I yielded the floor as the mayor to our council, but let me go back to our counselor, Thompson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted, one last comment. I don't care what happened in the past. This is the right thing to do, is to sell this property for $1 to the George family and put this issue to rest. The city has no intention to use this property, never has shown an intention. I've spoken with Jeff Hubbard, who's the Park and Rec Director. He has no intention to use this property. I think this is just one of those issues, this is the right thing to do, is to bring this back as a resolution to sell this property for $1 to the George family. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, before calling for other comment from the counselors, Steve, if you'd like to finish, any thought you had?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make clear in response to a comment that in the past attorneys had advised a particular way with respect to a property to make it clear that under these circumstances, that was not, would not be my advice. And I think some of the opinions, I just want to make sure that some of the opinions that the counselors are expressing are opinions and not legal conclusions. So we haven't had an opportunity to discuss this confidentially or otherwise with this council since it's been brought back for discussion. So I just want to proceed a little cautiously with the understanding that there is some background here and potential liabilities.
Sure, thank you. And as a lawyer, I can't help but react internally to the people saying, who has higher rights than other people do too? Because I know that really does involve a legal decision-making process. But it's probably time to hear from other counselors at this point?
Your Honor, based on legal recommendation, I move to table this item until further discussion and closed session. Go ahead, Steve.
I don't see a closed session exclusion here.
Okay, I will send my motion, and I would vocally oppose this item based off of prior precedent, and I shouldn't say prior precedent, but prior discussion and council's decision that drove excessive money based off of legal costs incurred by council to, essentially based off of the Georges' families' request forcing our hand in a legal matter. So I, I guess I'm strongly opposing this. We debated this, I don't know how many council meetings in a row, both closed session and otherwise, so I, I don't see any reason outside of a complete change in direction based off of multiple meetings held prior.
Other council comments or questions?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
It's my opinion, and I'm not a legal expert by any means, I'm glad I'm not, that the Georges have been taking care of this property for 55 years. I do not know the background of what has happened prior to, and the only thing I can look at is what is sitting right in front of me. I went down and I looked at the property, and I, I can absolutely agree with Al on this one and Gary. I, like I said, I don't know what happened before and what legal issues happened, but at some point you got to put everything behind you and move on. So I would support Al's idea, or Gary's, to sell it to him for $1.
Thank you. Other council input?
One more comment.
Sure.
Yeah, the item was, and I'd have to get Jessica's take on this, or Steve's. The item was dismissed. And I don't know if that throws all the legal stuff out the window. I'm just saying that this, we forced the issue. We forced them into doing what they did. So I, I think it's time to fix the item and be done with it.
Um, to just, to just be clear on where this did end up. The Georges did file a lawsuit against us when we started having discussions with the school district about trading for property. It carried on from mid-2018 through early 2020 when the Georges dismissed the lawsuit. It never went before a judge. It never had that final conclusion or legal, legal ending to it that said, this is, this is how it works out. So that was a legal question that we pushed to have resolved. We, we sent multiple emails to the Georges' attorney, as we did not want this dismissed. We wanted there to be a finite ruling on this, and that it, it is still our property. There's never been any legal transfer of property using a process set forth in Iowa code for this property. And as you can see from the city assessor's website, I highlighted the little area that were, that's in question, and it is still part of a parcel that is owned by the city of Marshalltown.
And I can't remember when Gabe came on, and relative to the discussions that we had about it, but I was on the council when they started over, well, back to 10 years before. And I know part of the discussion dealt with whether we would make a trade with a bicentennial park property that we had with the school district. And so this parcel was kind of part of, part and parcel, pardon the expression, of the discussion back then. Other council comment, though, before we open this up to the public discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Obviously, not being privy to any of this, I would be open for further discussion on this. I, I understand the history, long history. Are we opening ourselves up to whoever mowed that yard last? Every time the city mows it, I go mow it, so I'm the one taking care of it. I think a sale would make this the cleanest approach, and we do have recent history where we have started to navigate away from the selling for $1 for a property, to try to, to sell for a value that is more appropriate for that parcel of land. That would be my opinion.
Thank you. If everybody on the council has spoken, who'd like to, let me open it up to the public. Open to the public.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South Tenth Avenue. So we, to Mr. Kell, we do have a policy for selling property now that the council voted in. The question would be, what is the appropriate value? Since no one's going to buy it to develop a house on, it's land, well, it's not landlocked. It has access to a street, but it can't be developed. So it has no value to anyone else besides the property owner next door. So I think $1 is a good, good price. And it will pay taxes when it's on the city roll.
Other public comment? Well, it's a discussion item. There isn't a motion on the floor. There could be if somebody wanted to direct staff to do something.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to bring this back as a resolution to sell this property to the George family for $1.
Second.
Not sure we need further discussion. We've had everybody speak who wanted to. Let's go ahead and call a roll on that one.
Isom?
No.
Kell?
No.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
That motion failed, if my count was right. And so staff does not have direction for the next meeting. Next item of discussion is the Riverside Cemetery, Lake Woodmere. And I'm betting that a lot of the people who are here are interested in that topic. So let's open the floor for this discussion. You may.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda for tonight. I think everyone is aware of the problems that Riverside Cemetery is having with the pond and water, that type of thing. I do not see what worked before is going to work anymore. It's just not. So in looking for different avenues to fix this, I had heard that Riverside Cemetery was looking at drilling a well. Wells cost a lot of money. So then the next question was, could we use local option sales tax to be able to drill the well? And that turned into a pretty good legal question from Jessica, from our own legal beagles. And actually, for the last three weeks, been working with the state auditor office, Rob Sands. And they came down to an opinion of, yes, you can. However, it must have a public use. In other words, you can't just give money to Riverside Cemetery and them just slam the gates, and you're not going to be able to use the pond, or be able to walk your dog, or have the kids get bitten by the ducks, or whatever. And so, and what has to happen is, the city has to enter into a contract with Riverside Cemetery's board of directors that says, we are going to give you this money to be able to drill this well, and in return, you will have, let's see, I got a whole list of them. We have to have a signed contract negotiated by probably Jessica, I would imagine. They're going to have to leave the gates open to the public during their normal business hours. Now, in other words, when they, they're, go home at night and they shut the gates, that's okay. But what they cannot do is permanently close off to the public the pond and the pond area, the recreation area. They have to take care of the equipment, and they also have to get all necessary permits and whatever else that they need to be able to do this well, which I'm sure they would do anyway. I'm of the opinion that the community uses Riverside Cemetery so much, especially in Ward 1 and Ward 2. People are down there feeding the ducks, the geese, fishing tournaments, walking, jogging, dogs, all that kind of thing. It's almost more of a park than a cemetery. Plus, it's over 160 years old, so it's something very, very special. I, I am advancing the notion that we use local option sales tax money for this in this way. I know Dave has a short history of the pond, am I correct? Would you like to go ahead?
Sure. I'm David Shear, and I'm representing Marshall Cemetery Association, known as Riverside Cemetery, 611 North Center Street. We have been inundated with ideas and ways to save the, the lake that's there. It's a pond, but it's called Lake Woodmere. It first appeared on the rolls in about 1882, '83, somewhere in there that we found in our records. The cemetery is open year-round, 24/7. The only time in history that I know that the cemetery was actually closed was during the deratio, when it wasn't safe for people to come in with the tree damage that we had. With that, the cemetery now is faced with over $200,000 yet in paying off the bills that we have for the deratio. As it was said, the park was designed, or the cemetery was designed, to be a park-like setting. And we have photographs of years past with people being there. It is not uncommon for us to have over 100 visitors a day. How many cemeteries do you know have picnic tables? How many cemeteries do you know where kids come and ride their bikes? Or young kids learn to drive? It is used all the time, walkers, joggers. The cemetery is used. Now, I'm going to ask our director to come up and present to you, we'd like entered in a, into the record, the petition that we circulated. And we started this with the hopes that the council would help us to resolve the problem in one way or another, hoping to go to the, the water board. But if Dory Tammon would come up, if it's all right with you, Your Honor?
It is.
To present this petition. We have well over 2,000 signatures, and that does not include the signatures that we have on an online petition that one of the friends of the cemetery said, hey, I'm going to do that for you. Now, in a little bit of turn of events and something unexpected, we got a call today from the city of Albion. They're flushing their fire hydrants, and they were wondering if they could bring the water that they flush the hydrants with down to dump them into our lake. And we said, yes. As you, if you have been out there, you've seen it slowly dropping. There's no way that we can afford $2,000 to $4,000 a billing cycle to keep the lake going. So we shut off the water April, or October of last year. And you can see, we've had to shut off the fountain because it was starting to suck up sludge, also the waterfall. I am just utterly shocked at the number of people that have come to us wanting petitions, driving across town. We've had people from all over the state, all over the world, actually, who have loved ones buried at the cemetery and who have grown up on it. I'll tell you a story. This happened long before we had the lake issue. I always go out and see, we have different ones that'll bring food in. We feed the ducks and the swans. They get corn and dog food, and of course, the bread that the, the kids bring. There was an elderly lady, well into her 80s, and she had, oh, a little bit older than a toddler. I'm assuming her great-grandson. And she said to me, when I was a little girl, my grandma came to the cemetery with me to feed the ducks. And you hear that all the time. I get, I get kind of choked up about that because of the love that people have for our cemetery. In the 40s, it was designated as one of the top 10 cemeteries in the nation. And I imagine we'd still be up there. In the early 20s, if you'd like to see, I did bring a, an overhead of what the lake is now. But I'll read something to you out of a, a national magazine. It says, can you imagine a cemetery where children flock to play? Where little ones go in the winter to skate on the tiny lake? Where the summer they joyously feed the stately swans in this lake? Can you imagine a cemetery where one of the driveways is officially designated Lover's Lane? When the river was straightened back in the years, Lover's Lane disappeared. But it is something that...
And on it, somebody has written, there was 74 pages, about 100, 1,110 signatures up to that point.
Up to that point.
But if I could figure out the math on it and add another 40%, would it make it about, what, 1,500?
There's about two, not, well...
Little over 2,000.
Little over 2,000, plus the online ones. And that is around 700, 600 and some odd ones. We also gave you a preliminary cost of putting in a well and the fixtures and everything that'll be needed. One other thing of note, when we were trying to get a FEMA grant, this is, this folder is full of letters that people sent in supporting the cemetery. It is a true treasure, so.
Your Honor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I told Dave this earlier today, that I've got some calls and text messages kind of chewing me out, saying, well, that's the city cemetery. You know, why aren't you guys doing something to fix it? And I was telling Dave that, yes, a high percentage of the people in Marsh Town think that's a city cemetery. It's not private, and, and, but that just shows the way it's viewed, you know? I mean, when, and Dave's right. I mean, everybody that grew up here, you went down there to feed the ducks. That was just, that was just something you did. In my neighborhood, everybody gathered the heels of their loaf of bread, and Grandma Maxwell, who lived up the street, took everybody, took the whole neighborhood kids down there to feed the ducks. I mean, so I think what Mike is proposing, I think this, again, is the right thing to do to save a national treasure that's right here in our city. So, thank you, Your Honor.
One of the things not mentioned that has been interesting at the cemetery was when, when we had actors go out and play the roles of people who were buried there from an historical perspective, how many interesting people had interesting stories. That, that's another event that happens there.
It's very interesting to note, James Dunn is buried there. He owned the Cleveland Indians, led them to a World Series. We found out that there's a munchkin buried there, just this past week, I think it was, from Wizard of Oz, and documented. T. Nelson Downs, world-renowned magician, traveled with Houdini. He's buried there, king of coins. And one thing that was interesting, a couple, three years ago, the, in Des Moines, they had a national convention of professional magicians, and one of them was a coin manipulator. And he came to check out T. Nelson Downs' tombstone, just a small one, laid down and took a selfie of himself with it. So, I mean, and there are others. There's spies. There's people from the National Expeditionary Force in World War I. There are, you could go on and on. Every one of the approximately 24,000 burials at Riverside has a story of some sort, so.
Your Honor?
Thank you. Yes.
I am one of those kids that got bit by a duck growing up, so. I've spent time down there. The drill, is the driller quite confident that they're going to hit water that we'll be able to use?
Yes. We've, we've talked to a couple different ones. We're hoping to be able to hit water. We're high up, but a good water table. So it just depends on permitting and where we have to drill the well, and how we can do it, and those type things.
I didn't know anybody else was doing that, but I, I talked to Clint Gingrich, who is the biggest well digger in the state of Iowa. And I consider him a friend, and he was, was a client in a case down in Paoshie County. And so he is looking into it as well, and needed to know what the volume was needed and that sort of thing. But I, I don't have any doubt that if he gets the permits, which I understand requires approval of the cemetery, it'd have to be requested by the cemetery, requires the approval of the, in Marsh Town, requires the approval of the Water Works as well, and then the, the state folks, but...
From my understanding, the Water Works has indicated they would approve that.
It, I would be surprised if there isn't a way to get the permits done. And I'd be shocked if there isn't a way, given what our water situation is here in Marsh Town, if there wouldn't be the ability to drill a well and have it work here.
Yeah. We were hoping as well to put in a windmill, but that's kind of been dashed by one of your recent ordinances. We were hoping to have an, an old aero motor windmill. I mean, they still make them. It'd be brand new. But to use to help pump the water, you know, to save electricity because, well, the pump is going to have to run about 24/7, so.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Just so everyone knows, we are not talking potable water here. We're talking not drinkable water, but water that can be used for the pond itself. The, the rest of the water usage for the cemetery will still be on the Marsh Town Water Department.
And, and is currently. Two different meters, yeah.
In order to do this, though, we do need to follow Mr. Sands' advice, as the state auditor's advice, on how we step through this to make sure everything is correct. Because we don't want to trip into any kind of audit or anything like that, so.
Well, we initially did not come to the city, to you guys, for any funding, but helped to get this resolved with the Water Department. And I want to make that...
I, I think this gets us there.
That's, and that's what we're looking for, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
What's the ask tonight, or is this for informational purposes only for, I mean, is the number in front of us variable or pretty confident? Is the ask for this to be on the next council agenda? And is it for 5%, 100%? Where in that range? I'm just trying to understand what the...
There's variables here, you know? It depends on where the well would have to be drilled, and that, that's a cost. We were hoping to have it as close as possible, but it needs to be within 25 feet of the open water, which means we'd have to go under a road and some of those type things. Also, the electricity needs to be 220. All we have around the pond is 110 at the moment, and so... All we have around the pond is one-ten at the moment, and so, these are variables. Some may be a bit higher, some may be quite a bit lower, so.
I think you're looking at the forty-three thousand, you're probably pretty close to worst-case scenario for a two-hundred-foot-deep well. That's where most of your true cost is. It could very well be only a hundred, a hundred foot. So, that's kinda where you're at.
So, we're waiting for further direction on this item, and this is informational tonight?
Well, there's, these are what we have for the estimates. Until we actually start getting into it, we're not gonna know what the variables will be, you know, whether it's a hundred-foot well or two-hundred feet.
I think what I'm looking for tonight is just the general agreement that we're interested in this. And as we get the estimates in, bring it back for Jessica to, or do we want to set a limit?
Can I, can I make a recommendation, Your Honor?
You may.
I would recommend that you direct, a motion be made to direct staff to work with legal counsel, to prepare an agreement that we would finalize when, and bring back to you when we had more final costs or solid costs that were available.
If I may interject, we may not get exact costs until we start drilling. I mean, when it comes to the sump pump or the pit, the water pit and some of these things and electrical, there's even some variable on that, depending on how far the electric has to be taken. So, what we've done here is kinda middle of the road to worst-case scenario. And if it didn't cost that much, we would refund back to the city.
Just, just to be clear, what I would propose is that we would do this on a reimbursement basis, that we would not do just make a payment of a set dollar amount, that we would need the documentation showing that there were actual costs incurred related to this.
Sure, and that's not a problem, so.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I guess I would, with Jessica, with your guidance, what you asked for, can we do that? And then can we assign a cap and have that number in there?
Yeah, you can certainly do a not-to-exceed number based on the reimbursement requirement that would be part of the language.
I would say, I would like to direct staff then, I'd make a motion to direct staff to do what we talked about. And just to get this done, do the, once again, do the right thing. I'd say cap it at forty-five thousand. And I've gotta believe from, I was there the day, one of the well drillers was there. I believe that it's gonna come in under this with all these peripherals.
Second.
Further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
To, let's, you'll have, you'll have a chance to have further discussion after I first call for discussion up here. Any other consuls wish to weigh in on the motion and second that are on the floor?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just from my awareness, just the sheer volume of water we're losing, was there any investigation or discussion on how to slow or eliminate all the water leakage?
Well, there's not a lot of water leakage, other than, you know, if it happened to go to the overflow area like during storms and, and things like that. But the three-quarter inch pipe that went into there, it would take, right now, about a year, nine months to a year, to get the water levels back to where it was. In this time of year where it's not so hot, we don't have the evaporation. So, we're talking about an acre of water, so.
If I may, what I was told, Councilman Kell, is it's strictly evaporation, is what it is. Upon that size, it will lose a half an inch to an inch a day. But it seems to be not doing that. It seems to be holding its own pretty well.
Right now.
And I know from talking to the Water Works folks that at one point, there was a suggestion made that we drain it, measure, measure the loss, fill it, measure the loss and that sort of thing. And as I understand it, that hasn't been done.
We were out in the lake a couple weeks ago, taking measurements. The deepest spot was about five feet, and that's with at least three to four feet down. So, we took measurements several areas.
I don't have my notes with me, but it's an incredible volume of gallons, number of gallons that are having to be pumped in daily with water that could be drunk and nobody should be drinking it. But I would think that if we direct the staff to investigate this, those things can be explored as well, so that, so that we're saving people money and trying to keep it done well, but-
Well, we haven't used any city water since October of last year for the lake.
There's also, there was also a question raised about how high the level typically has been compared to what it could be, and I don't know enough about that either. That was something I learned this afternoon. But those are things that I think between the Cemetery Board, the Water Board, the City Council, and our staff, we can figure out a way to get this done. Because it's, it's a gem in Marshawn Town, and everybody here knows it, truly. I noticed my name is right under Roger Hellick's name on page, page twelve.
So, yeah, like I said, it just amazed me, the number of people that came.
I did that again. We're gonna have to have a little cage over this thing, apparently. That, I need to lose weight, like I said at the last meeting. Anyway, if anybody else up here isn't wishing to speak, let's go ahead and open it to the public, sir.
Reggie Zwemke, I live in the country on Jessup. I just had a question. When they did Franklin Field and Thirteenth Street, you know, people donated, and they had bricks with their name, they donated, I don't know, I know my sister did. But they raised a fair amount of money. I don't know if that's an option, you know, to fund. Do you know what I'm talking about, Mike?
Can I answer that? Your Honor, with the forty-three thousand, I, I suppose that a campaign could be put together and do it, but Marshall Town is beginning to experience donation fatigue. We've been through an awful lot, we've done an awful lot of projects, and, you know, people are just getting to the point of, geez, not another one. And I can certainly understand that, and we still have some to come up front-
Okay.
-to do that. So, that's why we went for this. And actually, with using the local option sales tax, everybody is donating a little bit.
So, my sister lives in Arizona, so what I'm saying, people have a lot of ties to this. I mean, they lived all over the world. And you put that out there, like these GoFundMe things, or people do? I bet you'd be shocked what you'd raise.
Well, Mr. Zwemke, I would be more than happy to accept a check from you and your lovely wife.
I was gonna do cash.
Make it payable to the-
I raised him, so. So, I just, I just thought I'd throw that out there. I don't know if that's something you could do.
I tend to agree with you personally, but I also know that I just sent in my three hundred dollars to have the plaque with our family name on it on one of those ten-foot sections. There was another fundraiser for putting the nice new fence that looked so much nicer than the old one did. But I tend to suspect there are people that would love this project and pull out the checkbook for it.
Okay. I just thought I'd throw it out. Yeah. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. Anybody else from the public? I know there are a lot of people here tonight. You're good. Go ahead, Dave. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm taking a little liberty here. Ray Mitchum, fourteen oh-two South Third Avenue. I, I'm considering that I'm probably one of the oldest ones in the room right now. But I was one of the ones who used Lover Lane in a different way. I was, I was a-
Fortunately, the statute of limitations has run on this.
Before your imagination goes too far, my mother used to take us along that lane to pick flowers for May Day, when we had May baskets. So, I go back to not only the Lover's Lane as, as picking flowers, but my mother was a birder. So, she loved the birds and all the trees in the cemetery. You can imagine the birds. So, as a young child, there was more to do than just feed the swans, but I enjoyed that. But I, I'd like to ask Dave Scherer, I was one of the thousands of letters that went to FEMA explaining to you why that is a park and why we all enjoy it. And I'm just wondering why FEMA would turn that down if we convinced them that it was a park. But I just wanted to remind everybody that there are some of us oldies that do have some very good memories, and we still do.
And I know, and I know Dave Scherer was on the City Council years ago. How old were you when you were first on?
I was one of the youngest ever. I think I was twenty-three, maybe.
Wow, okay.
Yes, we've been having fundraisers for different things, four thousand eight hundred and some feet of fence, and we're still working on that. You gotta realize, too, we had to borrow money from ourselves, what's called the Perpetual Care Fund, in order to take care of tree removal and some of the damage that's taken place. And we have to pay that back within a short number of years. So, we'll be doing some other fundraisers as well. Wanted you to just keep that in mind.
And I know we're probably violating the open meetings laws. At least I see Steve Leitinger's muted right now, so I can say that. We're not supposed to be responding to things like this probably a lot. But I do know a lot about FEMA, having been through the tornado and terricho, and it was no surprise to this mayor that we didn't get those funds. And we're about ready to have candidates coming back to Marshall Town, and when a presidential candidate comes, they like to talk to the mayor. I have never failed to tell any candidate that comes to town that they need to get FEMA people on the ground quicker and identify themselves and that sort of thing when we get hit with something like a tornado. I think actually they're working on that now, but FEMA is not a good resource for us on this project. I can say that. Anybody else from the public like to visit? Otherwise, let's go ahead and call the rule.
Your Honor, can Alicia reread the motion before we vote?
Sure.
Motion to direct staff to work with legal assistants to prepare an agreement to come back to the council with a funding cap of forty-five thousand dollars.
Got it? Okay, roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Very good. That carries, staff has its direction. For those here supporting the Riverside Cemetery and Dory particularly, thank you for the input and the good work you do there. Next item of discussion is number three, proposal for non-bargaining wage study documents. And those that are here just to talk about Riverside don't need to stick around for this unless you really like being at city council meetings.
Jill Petermeyer, Human Resource Director. As you know, part of our strategic plan, one of the objectives, is to do a non-bargaining wage study. We had been, Iowa League of Cities had partnered with University of Iowa last year to do this study, and it was going to give us the data free of charge. And I participated in that study late last November, and we've been waiting for the wage data. We just found out recently that that project is not gonna be completed. So, to meet the expectations to complete this objective, I just need direction to know if you want me to take the RFP out, to have a consultant complete that for us. And I'll take any questions.
Your Honor? Yes? I had two questions. Do we know why they canceled the project? And is there, I mean, did they get to a certain extent where there's any information that they'd be even willing to share that would help?
I think Jessica, if you could answer-
Yeah, from what I understand, I think this was just too big. They bit off more than they chewed than they had the class size to basically do. And from what I understand, there's, there's nothing that they can release, and anything that they would have would be basically a year old at this point. So, there was nothing that was going to be turned over to the League of Cities to do any distribution.
Yes, go ahead.
One of the concerns I have regarding this study is that while we are a city that employs quite a few staff, it's not such an inordinate amount that I can't believe we could just get some really good comparative analysis through work just with our partners in the League of Cities to see what it's taking for certain classes of jobs. What I'm worried about is, when we put out an RFP, it's not coming back to us for five thousand dollars to review two-hundred-some positions. It's going to be fifty grand. And so, what is the value of that compared to what we can intuitively understand from our work with other communities and, and doing some comparisons in other ways? That's just my reservation, not that the, the insight isn't valuable, it's just pound for pound, how valuable will it be in directing our future costs and employment for the town? That's just kinda where I'm at right now.
Your Honor, Jill, what did the last study cost us that we did? Because that was-
Two thousand and eight was the last time, and I don't know, Gary, how much it cost. The average cost would be around fifty thousand, as Dex said. And we have sixty-three positions that covers ninety-eight employees, that they would be at.
I would like to bid on that, then.
Fifty thousand dollars for ninety-five employees?
Ninety-eight employees, yep.
That's about five hundred dollars per employee.
That, that's what the consultant, that's the average cost.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Jill, what would it take for you to do this on your own, like Councilman Walker suggested?
Well, I'm a department of one, and I don't really have the resources to do it. What consulting firms do is they're gonna take and analyze our job descriptions, looking at education, experience. I can't call another comparable city and their planner's not gonna do the same thing our planner does, where the consulting firms have the resources to plug that information in and do an analysis on it. I can do positions here or there. We've done that when we've had vacancies with our benchmarking cities. But to do it at that grand scheme, it takes them six to eight months to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Welcome. Other council committee? Let's open it to the public now. Nobody from the public coming up? And so, now the issue is, does anybody wanna make a motion to direct staff to go forward with anything?
Your Honor, I would-
I guess, quick question. What's it cost us to do an RFP? I mean, it's your time. Is there anything else that goes into that to at least get the information back? Just to validate what the actual cost would be? I don't disagree with you, Dex, by any means, but at least get an RFP in front of us, at least positions, what dollars would look like if we decided to move forward.
That's what I was gonna ask. We've done other RFPs where we're not obligated, right? I mean, yeah, we do those all the time, right? So, what's that time consuming for you, Jill?
Actually, in your packet there's already a draft RFP, so it would just be putting that out.
Then, if you're looking for a direction, Your Honor, I would say, tag along what Gabe said and a little bit of what Dex said, that let's find out what the real number is, see what we're talking about before we decide what direction to take.
Was that a motion?
Sure.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Staff has its direction on that one. Onto the last discussion I have, and that's the four-year, two thousand twenty-three general obligation borrowing.
I put a handout on your desk that does have some corresponding direction with what, where we were at the end of the last meeting, and I just wanna kind of go full circle on this and then get some direction. And so, where we were at the end of the last meeting was trying to figure out what, what we were going to borrow. And I came back with a few different options for you. I'm gonna try and open all these up for you. So, one of the things that, just looking at, this is what we discussed at the last meeting, where just to get to ten million, two-point- where just to get to 10 million, 2.65 is what is for street improvements. But there are multiple ways that we could get more money into street improvements right now. To just sort of summarize a few of those, we can offset with local option sales tax. There's probably $2 million overall between two buckets of local option sales tax that could be put directly towards streets or used to offset other projects that are on this list. So that's really kind of option one. Second option would be to increase the borrowing from 10 million up to the total capacity that we have available. And I want to show you what that looks like here. To get to that $4,880,000, that puts the street improvement number at 6.7 million. So a much more substantial number that we have there. Then a, a third option to increase this number up here essentially on the top line and increase it for future years would be to increase the debt capacity to 75%. So that is an option to discuss as well. Heather came to me this morning and, and said that we, we had some bad news in that the Center Street viaduct project is $750,000 over what we borrowed for in 2021. And so I thought, let's look at this more holistic compared to where we are right now and give you kind of that broader view than just a number on a piece of paper with a plan that we don't necessarily have at this point. So I kind of wanted to show you, we borrowed 9.45 million dollars last year, and that was 1.7 was for the viaduct, 3 million for street improvements. If we fund the viaduct and changes out of the 2021 bond, that leaves 2.25 million that we currently have from 2021. This has then been allocated to some specific projects that have come before you and some that haven't, some yet to come. There's Box Culverts, 18th Avenue viaduct repairs, Boone Street intersections, the 2021 ADA curb ramp project. We're also purchasing materials for our in-house staff to do some repairs, so their staff time is covered, but there's material costs for them to do that. And then a, a project that will come forward here eventually is a concrete patch on Lincoln Way. So we're looking at really have, having committed 1.1 million of these, leaving 1.1 of, of the 2.25. So what we have coming forward, and feel free to ask Heather questions about these projects, because we haven't had a ton of discussion, but the calendar year 2023 street improvement projects that will be coming forward are East Main Street from Fifth Avenue to 12th Avenue, with some extension work on 10th Avenue as part of that. And so that's gotten a very broad estimate right now of $3 million, as well as then looking at another $200,000 of materials needed to do some in-house patching repairs, as well as then, some of you might be familiar with a crack sealing project that we've been trying to do for a number of years. That just needs to have the quantities updated with the data we'll get from Iowa State in December in order to put that back out to bid. And we're guessing that it is probably a $2 million project at this point with 2022 data versus 2018 data. And so I, I wanted to add in a few more options here for you to consider. So there's these, these, first three are, are ones that we had talked about on that memo. But then there's also, we could only borrow for the East Main Street and materials, which our funding gap on those is just about 2.1 million. Or we could only borrow for, you know, these, these things that we know that are going to be there with a funding gap of 4.1 million. If we were doing that, then that's when I would recommend that we would do option B, looking at a special street, street-only general obligation borrowing in early 2023. Early 2023, meaning we're, we're having these conversations as part of the budget process. Heather has shared that we're not expecting the data from Iowa State until December. She'll have time, her and her staff will have time, to put together a plan that would then have a real price tag to it. And so that is one of the options that I would like you to consider tonight as well. But the other thing, just to kind of go back here with these, is that, you know, we, we certainly can cash flow East Main Street, just probably we wouldn't see first bills coming until April or May, and we would have, you know, 1, 1.1 million on hand to pay any, any initial cost for that. But putting out to bid without all that money is a little bit scarier, just in terms of project planning. We, we try to have the money on hand before we go out to bid. And the same thing would be with the crack sealing as well, that that probably will come to you to order construction on before anything else would in, in 2023. And do we want to have those funds on hand before we would do that? So Heather's here to answer any questions. I'm here to answer any questions. We have a lot of options right now. I don't know how to, to best move discussion forward, but truly, we do need to finalize this list and these numbers for this. We need to finalize them this evening because the schedule is to set the public hearing on this borrowing at the October 10th meeting. Hold that public hearing on October 24th.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion. Go for it.
I'll start, since everybody else is being shy. We keep saying streets is a priority, so I personally said I didn't want to halt the progress of some of the momentum we had in town from a development perspective, which holds true in my discussion with regards to what else on the, is on the projects for 23. And this is our, I guess, decision to sit there and belly up or not. And I guess I'm willing to belly up on some of the streets and improvements, both what's on the list here and, and general additional funding moving forward outside of just 23.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I would echo Councilman Isom's sentiments. It is time to move on streets, and I'm not of the camp of, of holding back on the other progress we're seeing around town in order to do that. However, when I'm looking at the options before me, I am reluctant to approach number three, where we'd be raising our debt capacity up to 75%. That's my initial discussion comment.
Thank you. Anyone else like to weigh in about the different options?
Your Honor, if I may?
You sure may.
The, you already know how I feel about the Lynn Creek stuff. I, you know, I've been, for the three new councilors, when we raised the debt capacity, the whole idea was streets, because that was after we had the report on how bad the streets were. So it was my understanding that all this extra money was going to go to the streets. Where I have a problem on here, you know, maybe some of this stuff does need to take a backseat, you know, to push more into the streets. It's hard for me to explain to somebody who lives on a really bad street that we're not going to touch their street this year or next year, but yet we're going to make City Hall's parking lot really nice. So there's 390,000 right there. Maybe we take a year off on the sidewalk gap. Maybe, maybe I was wrong earlier. Maybe we don't need the 600,000 for dangerous dilapidated buildings. I, I really, at this time, not knowing what the future holds, don't want to raise the debt capacity higher than we did. I don't want to max out. I think the way to fund the streets is to push back on some of the other things. So that's where I stand. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Sure.
Wish previous councils would have borrowed more when it was cheaper. But I mean, hindsight's 2020. I suppose I'd be for option one, borrow the $10 million this year. And then I know we're looking at some other things for some revenue for more streets work. Streets need to be a priority, but we have a lot of things to get done. So I'll just say option one is my vote.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Jessica, do you know roughly what the cost would be to issue a bond, a, a second bond after the first of the year?
I thi, I think typically, especially when we're in this $10 million range, our costs of issuance, I'm not sure if we're buying that is...
She backed where you're going.
Oh, I think we're around 50,000. Does that sound about right? So generally, if we're in that range, it's 50,000. I don't think that's going to vary too much just because it's still paying for the underwriter cost, the, you know, the Moody's review and everything that would go along with it.
Your Honor, one thing I didn't add is, and Jessica's told me that we should, well, we've all heard, the streets report in December. I would really like to see that. I think that will help inform our decision on how much we want to borrow.
To, to be clear on a point that Councilmember Schneider said, so doing the first option of just borrowing the, the $10 million would leave 2.65. That would get us the East Main Street and the in-house material purchases easily. I think we would then be in a different position to talk about what to do with the crack sealing and where we'd be at in a different bonding process when that would be ready to come forward, because would that be February timeframe?
I agree with that. I'd, I'd really like to see the ISU study data before we move into what, so we can prioritize what we need.
Heather, for my awareness as much as anything, could you describe the crack sealing process? Because I don't remember which one that is. Is that where it's the tar and rock chip surface, or is that something else?
That would be something else. The city council has previously gone out to bid two times on this project. I believe one was 2019-ish, and maybe one was 2021. Could be late or early 2022, I'm not sure. Those are projects were both, the first one was bid out, it included both HMA pavement, asphalt pavement, and sealing those cracks, which is more of like the four-to-five-inch strip of tar is kind of what it looks like in concrete streets. They router the edge and they crack seal those edge. The second time that the city went out for bid on this project, they removed all of the concrete ones and only left the asphalt ones in, and there was no bidders on that. I was planning at the spring of this year to go out and rebid that project. After consulting several contractors, the reasons that we did not get bids before is the data was four to five years old on the lengths of cracks that were shown in the project. That is one of the things that stirred, requesting and reaching out to DOT to get updated information on that, so we could go back out for bid. At this time, we would see what those results were and try to fit a project within a $2 million limit, understanding that we can scale up and scale down as necessary.
Before asking for staff input on what the staff would like up here, let me open it up to the public.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So we have six to eight phases of redoing downtown Marshalltown, and that's about 3 million to 4 million each year. So most of the borrowing in the future years on this spreadsheet, and the borrowing now is talking about downtown streets, not neighborhood streets. There are neighborhood streets that are in failure. They're not crack sealable. There's no money for fixing streets which are in failure mode now. East Church Street off of 18th Avenue is the worst that I know of. So, so you're, you're basically talking about streets to everyone, saying, "streets, streets, streets," but you're really not doing streets, you're only doing downtown. So neighborhood streets are not going to get fixed in this plan. We're going to build some parks, and we're going to have a really nice bridge on a bike trail to Freedom Rock, but we're not going to have streets to drive on to get there. So I guess we all better buy some bikes. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the public like to comment? Back to, what direction would the staff like on this one?
If, if the, the consensus would be, this was in the packet, if the consensus would be that $2 million with 2.65 for streets, and then direction that we're coming back in early 2023 with a general obligation bond for streets only, when we have the data from ISU, that, that is what I need. It's really just finalizing this list and what those numbers look like on that list so that we can get it to our attorneys and they can prepare proceedings.
Let me suggest that was the consensus I heard, and you should operate that way. But if I'm wrong, I'd invite the councilors to speak up, and if somebody wants to make a contrary motion again.
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to say what you just said. To follow Jessica's, well, sorry, to follow Jessica's advice is what I mean. So that's my motion.
Okay. Good, I got that one. I didn't know what the hell I just said myself.
To proceed with the, the borrowing that was proposed in the packet.
Right. Yeah. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Well said motion. Okay, let's call a roll.
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Very good. Staff has its marching orders. All right, that takes us to the public comment time, and I have to read this proviso. Members of the public may make comments on the item that was not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Leave me your comments to three minutes unless I authorize more. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole. And the mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those because we want to comply with the open meetings laws. I guess it was okay to be commenting on earlier comments on the discussion items, but we can't do that for these. The microphone is open for the public.
Hi, I'm Sarah Tupper. I live at 2917 Jackie Terrace. I'm here tonight because I'm running for Marshall County Attorney, and I just wanted to introduce myself and tell everyone why I'm running. So I've been working as a prosecutor in the state of Iowa for 20 years now. I've been working in three different counties over the course of my career, and the last 10 years have been here in Marshall County. I have focused my career on the prosecution of violent crime, particularly domestic violence and sexual assault. And I think it's really important that we prioritize the prosecution of violent crime here in Marshall County to keep our community safe, so I would focus on that. We've got a drug court in Marshall County. I support those efforts. Our drug court has recently expanded with a federal grant. I think we can help a lot of folks and help our community as a whole by supporting that drug court. Something that I would do as well is establish a mental health court. I think we've seen with the success of the IMPACT program, there's a need for it, and we can do a lot of good by helping folks who are struggling with mental illness, so I would like to do that. I think that fiscal responsibility is really important in our elected leaders. In the 10 years that I've worked in the Marshall County Attorney's Office, I've written and I've managed grants that have brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay for prosecutors and victim witness coordinators, so I would continue to do that to save the taxpayers money. And finally, I think it's really important that the county attorney be a leader in the community, work with other community organizations, other leaders. I think we're going to best serve the community if we work together. I'd like to work to build a bridge between county government and our local city governments. Again, we can work best to serve the community if we do that together. So the election is November 8th. I would love to have your vote. I have a website, saratupperformarshallcountyattorney.com. There's more information there, and a link to my Facebook page, and I have flyers if anyone would like one after the meeting, and thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Sarah. Anyone else wish to comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So for all the people watching, and maybe for the minutes that are posted in the newspaper, the microphone is now open for all candidates of all elections to speak at. Thank you.
Linda Clark, 306 South 2nd Avenue. And since this is public comment time, I want to thank my class members for speaking out and reminding me of all the fun 55-year class reunion. I have lived at my residence 70 years of 73. And I know we have had question about affordable housing. I remember 2018 very well. Down the street is still not finished, and there are people on the council that very well know that there's a tent encampment south of my address on a commercial property, which is very sad to me. And there are people that should be getting helped, persons that I have approached, to try to get help for these people. I've paid my taxes, I'm very healthy, and... I've paid my taxes, I'm very healthy, and thank you all for your time. And no, Miss, I'm not a dinosaur. I am alive and well, and thank you, everybody, for your time today.
Anyone else? Okay, time's 7:19 PM, we're adjourned, thanks for coming, folks.